Our in-person meeting, May 6, 2021. Will the clerk please conduct oral call?
Amy O'Brien.
Here.
Sarah Stannata.
Mary Collins.
Here.
Michael Laver.
Here.
And then Lockwood.
Here.
We have a forum to call this meeting's order.
It's on Amy Lockson from the crowd.
Please stand up for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two point one, superintendent report.
I'm going to start the community school presentation by Stephanie Gaby.
Surely, yes. Like behind you or in front, up here facing us? Does that work? And Karen, if you click it again. I don't know why it like gave itself into me again, again. Or done.
It reflects your work.
It does.
Yeah.
Perfect. I just didn't know what order it was going to go in. So thank you for this incredible opportunity. I'm Stephanie Gaby as Dr. Princess Stew. So my role in school is the community school coordinator. And this is wonderful that I get to really kind of share and show thanks to the work that we've been doing. And I do want to give a ton of credit to Katherine Gesbinski and Hannah Allen for their support and partnership. Because we can't do this work without the opportunity to have stakeholder buy-in. And it really does start with your build and your finished ration. And I'm very fortunate. So I do want to give them a ton of credit and kudos for that. So this whole presentation is just going to showcase how we are working on community school development, talking about the strategy of community schools itself. Community schools are not a program. No one goes to the community school room. No one seeks out community school supports. I mean, we're working to build Shenango Fork Central School District in becoming a true community school. So that language is really important that I will share present presentation. I do want to share too, so as a very meaningful and that I am almost a dual employee. So I am employed at the Bingham County University in which my benefits come from there, but my salary comes from Shenango Fork. So it's a really unique contracted position. So I wear many hats, but those two are extremely important. So I liaise between Shenango Forks and I utilize the Bingham County University to do something called university-assisted community school model systemic approach, where we take interns, we take volunteers, we partner with faculty to make sure that we are getting resources and filling in the gaps of the district. And that gap is not a negative. Gap means, you know, we can't have, if we could have one staff person per child, that would be fantastic. But that's not the reality. We still have classrooms where there are one or two adults and we still have numerous children. And sometimes those kids, even if they're not, you know, struggling completely, we don't want anybody to fall for the cracks. So a lot of preventative proactive initiatives and interns and volunteers and faculty can provide a lot. And also then reaching out to the community and finding out how we can utilize what's already existing in the community and bring it into the school. Thank you. Go ahead. Okay. So just as a school district, the goal of community school development are to make sure we're increasing attendance. So we're significantly reducing absences. We know that students were not coming to school. There's something in the way. And we have to find a way to make sure that we are supporting the families, that we are finding out what it is that is the barrier to absences and students coming to school. Providing the access to resources. This isn't just making sure a child knows in the building where to go if they're having an update. It's really about providing access. So finding out what insurance the family has. Does the family have insurance? What doctor do they go to? Do they need a pediatrician? Do they need a dentist? Do they need counseling? Do they need to find an opportunity for getting food stamps? All five for ten. There's so many things. So making sure that families know, if I contact the school, there will be somebody and more than, it'd be better if it was more than one person because we have very valuable, knowledgeable professionals in the elementary school and other buildings, but I'm pretty to the elementary school now, who know about the resources. So it's really about the school being the one-stop shop for families that need something. Family engagement practices. So we've been utilizing a lot of family engagement practices this year with the parent guardians corporate, which has been extremely successful. We've been doing other initiatives that I will share. But it's really about building that bond between school and home. So just because a parent, you know, responds to an email says, "Thank you so much for the update", that's not family engagement, that's parent involvement. And there's a big difference between involvement and engagement. Engagement is true buy-in. Engagement is really hearing what the parents and guardians want out of their child's education and how they can become part and become actually a stronger part of the school district itself. So when you have parents volunteering, I know that your COVID is very challenging. There are certain things we cannot do, but there's other ways to get parent investment in. So hearing what they want out of something and then bringing it back to the school and saying, "This is the feedback. This is what parents and guardians want. How can we make this happen?" And then academic achievement, obviously something that schools, this is what we do, right? We want 100% graduation rate. That's what we all want. So again, finding out ways that community school model is to truly fill in gaps. So every component is met, just as schools always want, but the community school programming and initiatives, which becomes part of the school district as a whole, make sure that all of this is achieved. So it's that partnership. It's not, again, it's not, oh, community school people will do this. It's how can we as a system become a stronger unit to make sure all families and students and new people? This is just a really nice visual item. So the term equity and equality, I think major professionals know the difference. But equality is standard, everybody gets the same. Equity is really meeting where families and students are. So if you don't have access to certain things, just say, "Here's a phone number. Go ahead and call yourself." Some people know how to navigate that and some people have confidence to do that or even a phone to do that. Equity has been saying, "I'll make the phone call for you. Let me do that with looks facility and conversation together to make sure you get what we need." So that is something too about community school systemic approaches is making sure that it is truly equitable. Nobody is falling through the cracks because I gave them the information. It's about walking people through the support that they need and making sure they get what they need. Whole child learning and again, every single component you see here, this is what Shenango Forks already accomplished. I know when you walk into the elementary school, it is, the climate and culture is warm. It's loving. Nothing was more like just joyous to feel when the students were returning to the school. Ever, people were singing the hallway. It was such a nice feeling. So I think the elementary school is just in a really great place. And again, I can't speak to the middle of high school because I haven't been there, but I imagine it's very similar, that the professionals really work hard to make sure that there is, there's nurturing when you enter the building and it's a safe place for you to be. And the goal is then to make sure parents feel that way as well and guardians. A big piece too is again, the family engagement component, school environment, talking about climate and things like that, all very important. So again, really focusing on what it means to be equitable and making sure everybody has access and not just blanketing, "Here's the, here's, make that phone call with help me make sure that you can get there." Next slide, please. Okay. So this is the timeline that I wanted to showcase. So I was hired in, well, I started in October of 2019. So these were the things, so sitting down with Katherine and Hannah of elementary school was, what, where do we begin? Because Katherine and Hannah are very ready to community school knowledge, which is awesome. And it really helped just kind of spearhead and start this work. So it was attendance. Let's focus on attendance. So focusing on attendance with prepaid pay. So we can work early with the students and families and teach them how important it is to make their, have their children come to school, make sure the environment is safe and that people, if they're struggling, they know they can contact the school and say, "This is why my child is absent. Can you help me?" So we can reduce those barriers. So this is used in some of the things that we were doing. So I did get one master social work intern who came and supported in the spring semester. So she started with me in January. And then as time went on, obviously COVID, we shut down the school and I shouldn't say shut down, but you know, learning became the wealth. And then it was amazing when I did start, we had $6,000 or grant money from Conestown, where we were able to develop the family resource center. So that was part of the very requirements that I definitely talked about. And so that's what we did. So room 212 in the elementary school, that is the family resource center. So the goal is that families come in, do focus groups, have meetings, and of course, still trying to find out other ways to do that because we're still dealing with the pandemic. And just to share, so that piece where I leave is between Bingham County University and Shenango Forks, there are four meetings a month, every Wednesday from eight to 10. That is all about connection, partnerships, new resources that are available. Then I take that information and relate it back and spell it into our school. And then as time goes on, so here is March 2020. I'm sorry. So I was hired in October and then went until, this is like the timeline from November until March. March until August, these are some of the things that we did. So it was, okay, how, what can I do to continue to build that community school work? What can I do to continue to partner, but also not be a burden? Because getting kids their education is still important. And so how can we continue to support them and get them what they need? So we started with this initiative of keeping a positive postcard. If any of you see them or gotten them in the mail, I will be showing the image. It's just a really nice positive message that teachers and staff fill out and then email them home. We also made the phone call. So it's not just, here's a letter. It's, hey, I wanted to share something really positive. And then I made virtual ones. So we didn't have to worry about stamps. Actually, learning was instrumental in helping me actually pre-print a lot of the stamps on some of those postcards. So we did a lot of those. And then when I ran, when I ran out of the C K ones, I made virtual ones. A lot of section support to make sure families had internet access, delivering the meals, starting the parent guardian support group, so virtual support group. Anyone who wanted to come couldn't, it was just a talk. What are you going through? What are you feeling? What do you need? And that was the start of what we have now, where we have up to 15 members participating in the parent guardian support group. So as you can see, just things kept growing, so becoming part of PBIS and PPS committee. We did a lot of planning over the summer when students were obviously struggling with the sudden remote learning. We partnered with the high school and said, "What can we do with National Honor Society students to help the elementary students?" So we had tutors and we had five National Honor Society students supporting seven of our students and the families who signed up for the initiative. It was wonderful. It was tutoring, it was teacher support, and it was staff support because we had aides also sitting in on the sessions. And then I sat in on the sessions with parents who were involved. It was wonderful. So as we move on to this year, so September to 2020 to May of 2021, these are all the amazing things that we're doing. So when I say we, I mean the school. This is not just me stepping in and doing it. It's that partnership, it's that permission from Katherine and Hannah. And then it's how can we work this so we are seeing growth? So I'm very fortunate that I had numerous interns this year. So they did something called mentorship. So we had over 20 students participate in the mentorship program. And it was making sure we didn't compete with mental health reports that were already in existence. It was in addition to, so students who were just struggling with their organization, they, their own social skills were just a challenge because they missed out on that opportunity due to the pandemic. So it was about making sure they knew how to ask for help. It was teaching them those skills to be successful. And obviously there were significant mental health challenges. We needed them to throw them back to our school psychologists and school social worker. We did a homework helpers program. So the undergraduate students, what they did is we created a virtual after-school program. So the students would log on and they would join the interns and they would do after-school homework help. It was fantastic. And then this was a contribution to supporting parents and guardians to be present in their child's learning. So they could, they agreed that they will be present for those initiatives, otherwise we would terminate. So that was also, okay, this is true family engagement. This is really being a part of this work. The support group I mentioned, great, we applied for grants. We got $500 from Walmart through community grant. And that money was used strictly for supporting remote learning, right? So students who, it was allowed in their home and you could have phones. We purchased it and spent it. If you can turn in X number of assignments in a row or you log in so many times, you can earn something. So really targeting students who needed that additional support. Again, the meetings, keeping a positive postcard, this is fantastic. This is the contribution that the teachers have also given to this community school work is they fill that out in the picture in the next slide. But there's a postcard. We have done over 1,200 postcards. The 1,258 have been mailed home. So that's huge when you're talking about building that family to school partnership. Referrals, I get it from here. So families needed insurance, I facilitated them in the process, whether it was making sure they went to the marketplace for mothers and babies to have a meal network, or it was supporting them in New York State of Health registration with like the parent authority and actually needing insurance. Then outside counseling, we had 10 individuals who needed referrals. And then it was mine and my interns' jobs to make sure that they took their insurance. It was, here's a phone number, try it. If I will call, yes, they take their insurance. This is their schedule. Would you like me to schedule it for you? And the clothing closet, I'm going to talk a lot about that, that I think that has been one of the most successful initiatives that we've done. And it's so exciting because Katherine has been, again, I can't say more than I think about just really supporting all of this work. And so in March, it was, you should be a part of the site-based community. You should be a part of the C D committee. So that's where we are now. So this is just kind of a nice timeline on how we have built community school initiatives into the elementary school. And the goal is always to expand so the entire district is, has adopted community school strategy and has scheduled community school. Excellent. Okay. Just to give some quick numbers, so to back up, Stephanie Moonshler, the school social worker, had a ton of clothing in her room and our school nurse has had a ton of clothing. And it was, how can we utilize this clothing in a way that's strategic? So we developed a clothing closet, which is in the family resource center, making sure everything is kind of in one location. And it made sense for her to be there. So from those two locations, it was over 100 items. Shoes, pants, sweaters, you name it, coats, we collected it. So protocol is anything we got from the outside, any donations that we got from families, because we did publicize that we were doing this. So it's a, it's a community-based sustaining clothing closet. So don't go to a frisky shopper, give it to me instead. And it's been extremely successful. So then luckily, the school nurse, Diane Prasob, who's an awesome, she's let us wash the laundry. And then, so it's meeting all the protocol and the evidence of COVID and of course, collecting data. So not including the items that were given to us from existing in the school, we received over 242 items from the community. So when you want to talk about community investment, that's a great example. And then we have given out 79 items to students. So now they can participate in gym class because they wore their boots. Or they wore sandals or flip flops and they may need sneakers for gym class. So they forgot a winter jacket and they wanted to play outside snow pants because it was so cold and they didn't want to miss out on recess. That's equity, right? Making sure they have what they need so they can continue to participate in the initiative that their peers are participating and they don't miss out. Next slide, please. So here's some beautiful images of the clothing closet. So we have lovely coats. We have a whole pantry here. And then we have another section of coats. And then it just, yes, you can see kind of clothing. Next slide, more clothing. So we, I did just actually post on Facebook, we're in need of more leggings and pants and items that fit the gender female category because we do have a need for that. So yeah. And of course, I tried not to make any of the closet gender specific because sometimes it doesn't matter what gender you are, you're comfortable wearing certain types of clothing. So I wanted to make that a point as well. Next slide, please. And our shoes, we have lots of shoes, kind of boots, just amazing. The overwhelming amount of generosity. We've gotten brand new stuff. People have actually gone shopping to get those things. So it's just been really nice. And I think Shenango Forks, there's a lot of credit given to this community. And I want to give some more that it's just a really nice friendly place. And we just want to continue to expand on that. So, next slide. Okay. So incentives, when our students participate in the mentorship program, the homework helper program, when their parents and guardians come to the parent guardian support group, we give prizes. So students who, within the mentorship program, if they are trying to earn or try, say a goal is, okay, I'm not going to miss school anymore. For two weeks, I'm going to come to school. Great. If you come to school for two solid weeks, you can get a game. So it's all about supporting them in bold achievement. And then once they reach that goal, then what's your next goal? Okay, I want to increase my 75 to, or is when they're little, I guess, maybe not, maybe at a no late assignment. So then it's all about building and awarding them, so that I create a user. But these are very specific that they're family oriented. So the books get sent home and you're encouraged to read it with your child. The games are family games. They're encouraged to play as a family or with siblings or cousins or whoever your family is with. Next slide. These are the keeping positive postcards. So we have one for students. We have one for our parents and guardians. So teachers have actually built out the cards for the parents and guardians to say, "You have been so instrumental in your child's learning. We know this has been really hard. Thank you so much." And then we make the phone call and then we fill out the best and then we nail it out. And we obviously collect the data. So I gather feedback from my interns and they wanted to give a shout out to specific teachers who really, they felt encompassed what it means to be a partner of community school development and also supported their professional both as social workers. So Heather Budak in the preschool classroom, Katie Moss in first grade, Heather DeSena in third grade, Jennifer Stanford in fifth grade, and Hope Keats, that's a special education teacher. Just really want to give a huge kudos to them for really just being a true partner this year. It's just been fantastic. So if they're not listening, I'll make sure to email them tomorrow and say, "We need to know that's a great shout out to them." Next slide. So plans for the summer. So as a 12-month employee, I get an amazing opportunity to plan for the future and just ongoing work that we are doing. So there, obviously there's talks about what we're going to do this summer. So if there is summer programming, finding more interns to support that work and what that looks like, initiatives to continue to build community partnerships. So finding out what is already in existence. And a community partnership too, when we were doing the sister basket initiatives and gathering donations for that, that's building that partnership. Somebody who's willing to donate is a partner. So we found a lot of people who were willing to give. So it's all about exposure to and educating people on what it means to be part of, like what a community partner looks like to a school district. Great applications and funding sources, it's a huge part of the role, making sure that we are constantly getting money. So we can continue with incentives, we can continue with programming. We can offer new opportunities for families and students. And then the goal is to expand to the middle school, high school. And that was interrupted in March of 2020 because that was the goal, is to do a year in the elementary school and then expand the efforts to the middle and high school. So really being strategic this summer to expand and see what that looks like. Next slide, please. Okay. So this is my shield and I took a picture of the people who are inside. So if you want to click on my tab here, if you're in the family tab and you click on Hi, then you'll have to see for information about the family resource center, all the newsletters that are made, and then information about the clothing closet, and then my email, worksell, office number, and my Facebook page. Does anyone have any questions?
Can you expand on the middle school, high school? That includes like the clothing closet and everything and kind of all that stuff?
That's a great question. So that would have to be a big discussion, right? What would that look like? Is there space? So in my mind, and of course, this has to be run by administration. I don't want to throw anything out there that isn't relevant. But it'd be so nice to have almost one location. Like no matter what, I'm still supporting the middle school, high school, but I am still the family resource center of the entire district in the elementary school. And that is the space and I just can just branch out. We have the beauty of Zoom now. There's no reason to not connect with somebody. So whether it has to be in person or not, you know, we have the ability to connect and have communication like that and having interns, if items need to be delivered to the middle school, high school, it's all about them building that partnership too and learning about school systems. So it's a win-win for everybody. So we'll see. That's a great question. Anyone else? Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Stephanie. Only one other thing I had. Drew and Katherine, they are going to do a fifth grade and eighth grade graduations. They're going to be virtual live stream. Elementary is going to be 10:15 a.m. Middle school is going to be at 1 p.m. And that is on June 14th. That's all I have.
Okay. Two point two, board report. Emails. You said we would address emails each month. I think there was only one that came in. Is that correct? Just one today?
Yes, concerning the prom.
Do you have it in front of you, Lynn? Okay, I have it. I'm not going to read the name, but I will read the email. "I would like to know why my child is required to show proof of a vaccination, which had only been approved for emergency use or a negative test result three days prior to be able to attend prom. These standards aren't required for them to attend school daily or to participate in extracurricular activities. So why are they being required for this event, which is not being held on school property? What legal backing is there that a vaccine, which hasn't received full approval by the FDA? I'm sorry, but I will not submit to a vaccine that has not shown what the long-term effects are for a virus, which many of us have already had or know someone that has and are still here, healthy and well." Okay. So the question about requiring vaccine for prom. Dr. Pat, would you like to address that?
Yeah, I sent the board, Lynn sent me the email because I don't get the email. She sent it to me and I phoned the board, all the information of why we have to do it. Actually, I phoned you through to say, "Doctor, it's stated why we have to do it."
Well, it's a New York state guideline.
Correct.
Very specific. I'm sure you have our hand.
It's exactly what Linda said. If you want to have a prom, if you don't have it in that type of venue, you go over the amount of people, the people from other buildings. Mr. Daniels here, that is correct. You and I, Mr. Motel, from my office, that thing Tuesday or Wednesday maybe? We read the guidelines straight out. It's actually under catering. And you have to have the COVID test or the vaccine. So if that individual is not going to do that, they would be allowed to come to stay.
Do we have to withhold from the survey?
We do. If you let me look, I actually put it on my phone, through email. And I got to see what's in motel at the end of the day. Right now, we're looking at the 67% voter turnout, the vote was 77 yes, 76 no, broken down by grade, juniors with 42 yes, 34 no, seniors with 35 yes, 42 no. And then, so I asked, and Dave, he's given me now, what did he ask the seniors exactly? And the juniors, to get that response, it's changing. It was new rules to the prom, but it released from the state and incorporated them into our situation. With these measures, the new potential prom looks like this. Friday, June 18th, the health course, obviously, one prom, nine to 12. You can bring students from the Forks, grade 10 through grade 12. You can have a few from other schools, grade 10 through 12. So you just must get changes that you've been had before. You will not be limited to only dance with people at the table. You'll be able to dance with anyone at the prom. There'll be two courts, two things swinging, print princesses. Wonder if I'm a junior or a senior, you have to wear masks at all times. The stipulation is, if you have the people, you need to have a full vaccination or negative COVID test three days before the prom. So that's coming in because we changed the guidelines of, at one point, it's going to be hour and a half, hour and a half, no outside people. And now it's a full flood prom. And that's what students are going to do. Remember, if they make a Brian, I'll be down at the bed. So that's where we stand.
Thank you for explaining that.
Do they need to have to test three days before they can show up at prom when they pass the test?
Well, they have to have to test three days before, but they show the prom results.
Okay. You're checking that out.
If anyone's bumbling, it's always. Not much. If anyone's bonged, there's always, they would have bonged, there's always. It's the same thing. Three days before you go on the plane, you have to have a test. If you don't have the test, you're not going to fly. That's definitely the rule. So it'd be the same thing.
So we have to lease this. This isn't going to be on the roster?
No, you have to lease it. And it's just like graduation. Graduation is similarly like that. And like I said, when we open to the church, you can go with some possible plays. We're gonna do a best effort, but you want to sneak in there without, you know, having to write that on to get to the end there. That's what Dave and I were saying. You and I had that conversation as well. I think the entire admin team has been like that you're gonna be very hard pressed to please the church with so many, it's all going to the church. Open any of the outside. I mean, we'll try to please it, but it's gonna be nine out of seven impossible to please. And again, I sent the board, I sent the board all these documentation, you know, after the prom, what you need to prom, and it'll give you that, that all that as well.
Survey. So a survey went out to the community, to staff, um, asking what they top three important qualities they valued in the next superintendent. And that went out as an email from me directly. I'm not sure exactly how that worked. Um, I did approve the email and gave my permission to, uh, put my name at the bottom on the cap of the Board of Education. But just so we're clear, I did not physically send that out from my email. Um, so I bring this up for two reasons. I want to clarify that and also remind people, if you have not filled it out, please do. Um, if the board is okay, I'd like to set a deadline by tomorrow, end of day tomorrow, so that we can forward that information to Al Bike and he can work with it. They've had it for how many days now? It is a survey that takes literally like fifteen seconds to get through. Um, I was trying to find. My email's such a mess. Uh, it was, yes, it was Monday. I mean, if you guys think it was, it's, I know time is on. I don't know what, you know, I don't know. Um, excellent question. I mean, you would think it was me. So, um,
He said, who monitored him? He was checking his, where's the result? Like where is it going? He set up the survey. Was it Al?
Maggie Delroy, uh, set it up, I, I, I believe. No, she didn't?
I think it's Paul.
She didn't set up sending it out. Oh, well, that's what I mean. Okay, so she, she doesn't get the results. Okay, um, it must be Al. I will reach out to him. I will reach out to him.
I mean, I would see how much response it got back, but it not got a lot. Maybe they, or maybe he sent another, blacked out, you know, something about.
Could you see the communications or have you what else?
I, I, I stored it. Everything I ever seen.
No, but I'm just saying, it's just definitely your work, your time, setting up all this stuff. You know, if, if everything CC, you know when it's coming in and you can kind of follow the timeline. Sometimes when I get a bunch of emails.
Nailed it. Never remote email.
But I've sent them. No, I've sent them.
No, he's got them.
Yeah, yeah. That was definitely sent in there.
He said, yeah, I, I sent them too. As soon as he said that, that he didn't have any emails, I sent him everyone's email. So he's got them.
I'm still, but no. Okay, um, please, we could back me on that. Yes, I, I can. I, everything he sends me up towards the board. Um, yeah.
It's just, it's just easier. That way there's like a timeline, you know what I mean? Because you're forwarding them later. And that way, like earlier, you know, it's like, well, let me just go out now. If everyone CC'd all the time, we all know when it came out very well. It's just easier to follow.
Yep, absolutely. So I will wait to hear from him. So we're gonna agree tomorrow and today. Get the survey done. I, I don't know. Um, okay.
I mean, it's always got sent out. I mean, there, there's, a lot of people just not going to do it.
Well, I think a lot of people were confused.
It was a little confusing because there was a lot of stuff before the actual, you know what? This is what we'll do. Um, let me ask them to send it out one more time tomorrow. Let's get people through the weekend and I will, yep, Monday. I was thinking first of the week. You know, Monday, whatever result Al has by then, he can do, because we need to keep moving.
If you refund it, Mrs. O'Brien, isn't there a chance for some people to do it three times?
I was told and that was one of my questions. Um, once they've done it, they can't do it again. Once they've.
But if you send them a link, you gotta make sure that they can't do it again.
It's on the webpage too.
It is.
I don't know. They could potentially do it four times.
That was my concern.
And then, yeah, they're gonna overrepresent the people that want to send it out.
I was told that can't happen, but again, I don't know. I don't know how it works.
The other thing, unfortunately, what if I use this for messages, you're not sending it to the entire community, you're only sending it to the people who got emails too.
Which is why it was posted also, because I did get an inquiry from someone asking why they did not receive it because their kids are not enrolled this year.
Anyone not enrolled, you don't have an email. I had that on file. Mike, if you didn't have, you sent it, you would not, you would not get to do it. I, I think it's been a while, but if we're not waiting to go until Monday.
And people are focused on the space. Yeah, I mean, there has been, I think the community knows about it.
So even still, I'm gonna say Monday.
Yep, we'll remind them, get it done. Just a reminder, get it done.
Let's just make sure that you're not, they can't answer it again. If they can answer it again, it's going to skew all the folks.
Absolutely. So why don't we just keep it as a reminder? It's posted in enough places. Keep it as a reminder. Have through the weekend and whatever results we've received Monday will be utilized. Okay, three point one. Oh, before I go on, does any, any of the board, anything else? Three point one budget hearing, Mark Katrina.
Hey, welcome to the, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two budget hearing, the Shanae Report. We start off with the budget development process and how we came up with the budget. And we have a submission of program budgets based on needs, review of staffing levels to best meet student needs, then a review, state aid and the revenue sources available to support the budget, and then, uh, discussion and adoption of the budget. So what's new in the budget this year? We maintained all staff and all programs. We had significant reductions in non-program areas to help reduce our reliance on the district. So the proposed, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two expenditure budget, um, looks like this. Uh, salaries and benefits. We had an increase of eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, debt service, we had a reduction of fifty-eight thousand. OC services, we saw an increase of three hundred and seventy-three thousand. Contract transportation, we have an increase of fifty-three thousand. Utilities and fuel, we have a reduction of, uh, almost six thousand dollars. And other expenses, we have a reduction of two hundred and ninety-one thousand. A total increase in budget over the last year of eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand, seventy-nine dollars.
Mark, what's included in other expenses?
That's your, uh, materials supply, that's your, uh, your benefits. Well, not the benefits, because the benefits of the new.
Anything that the school used to do before, or even, or something?
Um, operations, you know, your, all your expenses and operations.
I'd like to make that.
Right, right.
Thanks.
Now, this, uh, breaks down the, uh, budget into three, three parts. Your administrative part, your program, which is basically the education piece, and the capital. And you can see that, uh, the administration increased forty-one thousand dollars. Program piece increased nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And the capital piece increased, or excuse me, decreased a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. So this is a detail of each of those components. We have an administrative component, which deals with, uh, the board of education, administration, special police, uh, personnel supervision, and the benefits that apply to all the individuals in the police. Program component again is the teaching component, uh, which is special education, summer school, transportation, and again, employees benefits. And the capital component, which is basically, uh, operations, maintenance, uh, all the items to support the building maintenance, uh, employees benefits. This is the revenue budget. Uh, what makes up the revenue that's gonna match our expenses, uh, tax levy. We have an increase of a hundred and seventy-six thousand. State aid increased seven hundred and twenty thousand. Other revenue is a hundred and one thousand dollar increase. The use of reserves, we are reducing our use of reserve, uh, a hundred thousand dollars, and a compound remaining percent. In the small capital project for next year, we're gonna start the phase five of the elementary program, uh, excuse me, elementary playground project. The project, uh, every year is a hundred thousand dollars, of which we get ninety percent of it is building aid, so that the, uh, net cost of the district is ten thousand dollars. Playground and then, that project is gonna entail continued resurfacing and interior door replacement. Also, the summer transportation contract is going to have an increase, um, from one year of, um, six point two percent, which is an amount of thirty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars.
That thirty, thirty thousand is more than last year?
No, that thirty-nine thousand is the total cost. Actually, from, from two years ago, because we had no summer contract. So the proposed tax levy is one point four three percent, which is a hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars. And the tax levy limit is one point four three percent, and we are going up after limit. Except the tax increase, a hundred thousand dollar home at full value, the four star is roughly three hundred, thirty-four dollars and fifty-one cents per year, or two dollars eighty-eight cents per month. Again, these figures are based on, uh, the current equalization rate and assessed values at the time that the tax bill will be presented, kind of, those, uh, equalization rates, those are, so, again, these are just raw estimates they kind of. And this is the list of the pound star exemption stating basic star for each pound and with the pound star. If there's a contingency budget, uh, contingency or district budget would be reduced for all non-computer hardware equipment. A hundred thousand dollar capital costs in the projects for the elementary playground. Five thousand of elementary, it's cost to be cut. And twenty-four thousand, here it's thirty-seven dollars, program cost to be cut to bring us down to a contingency budget of thirty-five million, seventy-seven thousand, nine seventy-one. And the position path was twelve million, two hundred and ninety-three thousand, sixteen dollars. And the bunch of posts is the eighteen, uh, based on, and then the other ten. Any questions?
Before we go on to public comment, I just want to, um, address the June meeting and July meeting. So due to that, uh, we have to decide if we are keeping it or changing it. So if anyone would like to pipe in?
I know.
I know, oh, June tenth, uh, okay, sorry about that, June tenth. Sorry about that.
That fits with the standard.
Thank you.
You may have to have it, you can, at the end of June, or when, you know, first class, and might, might have to go for you guys. You may have to have that. You have it out there.
You have the meeting at graduation day.
Something different, maybe you started talking. Okay.
Are you going? I'm telling people that.
Why are we moving it?
Oh, okay. I mean, you have to have that, you've got to have that.
I just thought I had to, if you have something for a contest. I mean, that's moved down, like something comes up that you have to invest before you make that one additional unit. That's the only thing, you know, just have that out there, but you may end up needing it done.
That's fine.
Well, like I said, their name is, you know, by the way, she has been already invited to that.
Can't keep it, we just keep having in the back of your mind that it might end up having some, having another meeting the following week or something.
I don't know. I don't expect it, I can do it with, uh.
Okay.
Okay, so we're keeping the June 10th meeting and in person, we're officially back in person. And, uh, the July reorganization meeting, so we can't, we can't set that yet, is that right?
We've got to wait till the election.
Okay.
Yeah, to get some votes.
Right.
Okay, so once the election has been determined, our next board, we will schedule that meeting. Okay, thank you. Uh, three point two, public comment. The public, I think, is speak to the Board of Education, will be allowed this period of time, speaker under the following guidelines. Speakers will be limited to a maximum of three minutes in the entire public comment section, to a maximum of 30 minutes. Speakers are requested to stand, state their name and topic. There was a sign in seat, if anybody wanted to sign in to see. Speakers will not be allowed to personally track any board member, administrator, or any of the public present. Also, no comments by the speakers will be committed that deal with executive session subjects. Such as individual personnel matters, discipline issues pertaining to specific individuals, including students. And speakers will not be allowed to read letters. So is public comment limited to our physical audience? Okay. Okay, there you go, you get on. Okay, upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve 5.1 through 5.8.
Motion.
Steph? Thank you, Mary, discussion. Roll call. Any of that, hi, yes, tomato. Yeah, Helen.
Hi.
Michael Babbitt.
Hi.
And then, Mather.
Hi.
Motion passed. Great, upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve 6.1 through 6.6.
Motion.
Thank you, Steph.
Right here. Then.
Okay. Uh, roll call. Amy O'Brien.
Hi.
Chris Tomato.
Hi.
Yeah, Helen.
How?
Michael Babbitt.
Hi.
And then, Mather.
Hi.
Motion passed. Great, 7.1 and 7.2 are FYI. Right, upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve 7.1, um, excuse me, 7.3 through 7.7.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you, Mike. Roll call. I'm sorry, discussion. Roll call. Amy O'Brien.
Hi.
Chris Tomato.
Hi.
Yeah, Helen.
Hi.
Michael Babbitt.
Hi.
And then, Mather. Motion passed. We want to thank, um, we just want to acknowledge 7.7, which was accepting a donation from Karen King. Care of Debbie Miller in the amount of $62 to be applied to the balance of the John Grassland Scholarship. So that two full scholarships could be awarded this year. Thank you. 8.1, upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve the Board of Education minutes from the Special Board of Education meeting. April 19th, 2021, as a sketch.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Lynn. Uh, discussion. Roll call. Amy O'Brien.
Hi.
Chris Tomato.
Hi.
Yeah, Helen.
Hi.
Michael Babbitt.
Hi.
And then, Mather.
Hi.
Motion passed. 9.1. Well, is there anything?
She was asking about the stop arm cameras. I gave these to the drivers to try to explain and I made copies for you guys. Just so you're aware, a little more about operates.
Thank you. Uh, a motion for consideration of executive session to discuss some matters relating to the employment of a particular person and heading litigation. Motion. Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Sarah. Discussion. Roll call. Amy O'Brien.
Hi.
Chris Tomato.
Hi.
Yeah, Helen.
Hi.
Michael Babbitt.
Hi.
And then, Mather.
Hi.
Motion passed. Uh, do we anticipate any action? Okay. All right, have a good night. Thank you all for attending. And we'll see you June 10th.